Welcome everyone to this evening's forum for the seven candidates seeking election to the five open seats on our Washington County Maryland Board of Education. Overall, the board is composed of seven members elected at large for four-year staggered terms, and board members earn a salary of $12,000 with the board chair earning a salary of $12,500. The seven candidates with us this evening include Peter Beckford, William Bill Donahue, Benjamin Forrest, Laditra Robinson, Stan Stauffer, Melissa Williams, and April Zentmeyer. My name is Richard Wilson and I'm the current president of the League of Women Voters of Washington County. This evening, we will first be providing each of our candidates with a two-minute opportunity to introduce themselves to you. We will invite the candidates to speak in order. Their names will appear on the November 3 ballot for these introductions. But in each of the following sections of our program, we will call on our candidates in a computer-generated random order. These candidate introductions will be followed by a series of questions that have been formulated by our league members. Candidates will be given one minute to respond to these league questions. And following the five league questions, we will turn to questions submitted by members of the community who are watching live on the league's Facebook page or who have emailed questions in advance to the address now on your screen. Behind the scenes, we have a team of three league members who will be working to combine similar questions. Please word your questions so that they can be asked of all the candidates as all of our questions will be asked of three candidates in rotation before moving on to the next question. And now let the questions begin. Let me introduce you to our moderator for this evening, Dr. Eric Schwartz. Dr. Schwartz is an instructor in the Political Science and International Relations Department here at Hagerstown Community College. Dr. Schwartz, take it away.
Hello. Thank you, Richard, for the introduction. I am the assistant professor of political science at Hagerstown Community College. I guess we will ask the candidates to introduce themselves with a brief introduction with the time. We have a timer that will be going off and indicating when the time is running short with the you'll be notified by the yellow up in your upper right-hand corner. So I think, Richard, we're going in alphabetical order for introductions.
Yes, Mr. Beckford will be first.
Yeah. Mr. Beckford?
All right. One of the advantages of having Beckford as your name is you get to go first, but that might be a disadvantage as well. But thank you, everybody, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm looking forward to hearing from all the candidates and having a good conversation. My name is Peter Beckford. I'm a product of the Washington County School System, went to Winter Street School, Western Heights Middle School, graduated from North High, moved out of the area and then returned and raised my daughter in the school system. She has since graduated. I'm currently finishing up my first term on the Board of Education and I've absolutely enjoyed pretty much every minute. I was thinking of some highlights of the past four years that have really been memorable to me, and I think one of them was that we were able to expand preschool universally. We saw the kindergarten readiness numbers and we were one of the last in the state. We made the investment in our youngest children and we've now climbed to we're one of the best in the state when you look at the kids who did were able to take advantage of our pre-K program. I'm also very proud of the fact that despite a very conservative budget, we were able to raise our starting teacher salaries. So we're not we now have the highest starting salary in the state of Maryland, and that means that your children get experienced educators. It makes a huge difference when you're trying to attract the best into the county and we're already seeing that paid off. And then, of course, we've been dealing with this latest crisis. I'm sure there'll be questions about it, but I'm very proud of our team that we were one of the first in the state to get distance learning up and running. And I think that is because of our commitment to technology for each of our students. So thank you again for having us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. And I and you made it under the under the time. So that's very good. You get my respect for that. I believe next up, we would have Mr. Donahue.
Hello, my name is William Donahue. I go by Bill. I'm running for the Board of Education because we need 21st century schools to better meet the needs of our students, families, businesses, employers. I'm a retired school teacher who also co-owns a small business. I first had insight into the improvements and innovations needed in the schools. I believe the schools, the students deserve a high-quality 21st century education to prepare them for additional higher education or a career in the trades and other industries. In addition, I feel the needs and issues that affect all of our students should be heard and considered. Fear and a lack of basic needs affects student learning. Finally, it's the duty of members of the Board of Education to be fiscally responsible to the citizens of Washington County. What if education policy should reflect these goals?
Okay.
I want to thank everybody for inviting me this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. And we have next Benjamin Forrest. If you would introduce yourself, say a few words about to introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start this evening by thanking the League of Women Voters of Washington County for hosting this wonderful event to allow voters of Washington County the opportunity to learn more about and hear from us, the candidates for Washington County Board of Education. I'd also like to thank Dr. Schwartz from Hagerstown Community College for moderating this event tonight. My name is Benjamin Forrest and I'm running for the Washington County Board of Education. I'm a recent graduate from Frostburg City University with a bachelor's degree in political science and a minor in mathematics. During my four years at Frostburg, I had the opportunity to serve in our campus Student Government Association as a Senator, Student Affairs Chair, Vice President and President, as well as serving as the President of the University System of Maryland Student Council and as an appointee to the Maryland Youth Advisory Council where I also served on the Executive Board. All of these experiences providing me with invaluable experiences in service, advocacy, and in shaping institutional and statewide education policy. I'm also a product of our county school system, graduating from North Higginson High School in 2016, where I participated in the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program. I'm passionate about public education, public service, and our county's public schools, which is why I decided to run for the Board of Education here in Washington County. I've also spent the last four years as a substitute teacher here in Washington County, which has given me the opportunity to work with and interact in a multitude of school settings all across our county. Additionally, I come from a long line of WCPS employees. My grandmother was a teacher here in Washington County. My grandfather was a principal, assistant principal, and supervisor here at the Board of Education in Washington County, and my mother's currently a teacher here in Washington County. I've grown up around these major educators and the incredible educators that they work with, and I want to work to ensure teachers across our county have the resources to provide our students with the best education possible. I hope to have the opportunity to visit, interact with parents, teachers, staff, and students from every one of our schools across the county as a member of the Board of Education, and hope that together we can work to shape our school system to best serve and support every member of our educational community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, our next candidate to hear from is Laditra Robinson, please.
Thank you for inviting me, Women's League of Voters. My name is Laditra Robinson. I'm from originally from Inglewood, California, graduate of UCLA and Johns Hopkins. I worked in the government for many years in policies and education. I've been in Washington County for over 20 years. I have three kids that have gone through the Washington County Public Schools. One has graduated from college. I have two that are still in college. I joined several organizations when I came to Washington County to learn about Washington County, and basically they all were dealing with youth. So then when I I started my last place that I had volunteered with the Washington County Commission of Women, there on my second term, I became president and I started the Blossom School Etiquette in Washington County. The Blossom School Etiquette is a school for young women to learn poise, manners, self-confidence, also mentoring the young people, and education. I have been successful for the last 14 years with young ladies going off to college, having successful careers, having college degrees, and starting their careers. The reason why I wanted to be on the Washington County Board of Education, my passion for kids to have the most excellent education there is, and work with teachers, and be transparent and accountable for everything that I do on the board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Laditra. And next, we have Stan Stauffer to introduce himself.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. Excuse me. My name is Stan Stauffer. I'm a 42-year veteran of the Washington County Public Schools. I taught social studies beginning at North High for one year and then I spent 41 years at Williamsport High School. I guess you could say I've had a passion for education ever since the ninth grade of school when I decided that I'd like to be a high school social studies teacher. So I went to college and I did that. After college, I served in the United States Army in the infantry in Vietnam. I'd like to thank that, well, I'm finishing my first term, four years as Vice President on the Board under the excellent leadership of Mrs. Williams, who's been the president all that time. I'd like to think I've played along with my colleagues a role in changing the climate of the Board from what it was before 2016. I think we've done that. In my 42 years as an educator, I've done just about everything there is to do. Strongly involved with students, been a coach, extracurricular, activity advisor, helped write the one of the editions of the State High School Assessment in government. I taught interactive television, AP American History. I've been involved with the Teachers Association for many, many years, headed up negotiations one year. So I think that gives me an advantage serving on the Board because I know how the association thinks and what's important to them and what's not important to them. I would like to finish, like to serve another four years because I think there's a lot we haven't done yet. We haven't finished. And I think one of the big things that we did when we took office in 2016 was the selection of Dr. Boyd Michael as our superintendent. He's a local guy and he's done an excellent job. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Stan. And next, we have Melissa Williams. If you please attempt to introduce yourself.
Good evening. Thank you to the members of the League of Women Voters for providing this opportunity for us to come together tonight. I am indeed Melissa Williams and I'm here as an incumbent candidate. I'm currently in my second four-year term as a member of the Washington County Board of Education. I have served as Board President since my reelection to the Board in 2016. Serving on the school board for these past eight years has been a privilege and a great responsibility, a responsibility that I've not taken lightly. I believe in public education and my life's work has been educating our county's children. I retired from Washington County Public Schools in 2009 after 35 years as a teacher and central office administrator. Those of you who know me recognize that I'm an independent and critical thinker, one who is reasonable, approachable, hardworking, committed, and ethical. When I undertake something, I do so with the intent of giving my all and giving my best. I'm seeking reelection because I have knowledge, experience, and skill to bring to the table at a time when public education and our school system is in crisis and faced with many challenges never before experienced. I feel honored to be here in the company of caring and capable individuals who want to make a difference for our students. Thank you again, members of the League for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. And last, we have April Zentmeyer to introduce herself.
Okay. Good evening. I'm April Zentmeyer. I'm a lifelong learner and I love to share this passion with others. I've earned degrees from Towson. And finally, my doctorate at the University of Maryland College Park. I earned an RN at HCC Admin 2 from Hood and experienced the world of work in many ways too, PR, nursing communications, and as President and CEO of two companies in Florida. I've served as a teacher and administrator for three decades. My educational career began in Baltimore City Schools and then Anarundel County before returning home to Washington County where I was an English teacher at Boonsborough for 15 years and then ended up AP at North and Williamsport. I've had many opportunities to develop a vision, mission statements, strategies to successfully accomplish goals and objectives. My number one priority is school safety. Fear extinguishes the love of learning. We need to have student achievement, social and emotional well-being unhampered by fear. When I say our future is in our classrooms today, that includes teachers. They're the most important factor in maintaining excellence and bolstering student success. Thank you to the League and all who have joined us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Zentmeyer. And thank you, everyone, for those concise introductions. It's not much time to sum yourself up and it's it's important though that people have a sense of who you are. We are already getting some questions coming in. And the first question that has come in be a challenge to make it fit into the time period, but the question is, what is your strategic vision to keep pace with innovations in education and our ever-changing world? I guess we will in the lack of for, I guess, maybe to be fair, why don't we, why don't we go in reverse order to to so that we don't keep on going from the beginning of the alphabet? We'll go back and forth, right? So.
Eric, we do have a timing for this and Mr. Beckford gets that first question.
Oh, he does get it. Okay. Good. Okay.
What is my strategic vision for keeping pace with with the changes? Well, we're experiencing it right now because we've had to make a major shift due to COVID. And again, I can't tell you what a monumental task it was for our staff to go from normal operations to one spring break in two weeks where they worked and we were able to get distance learning and children learning from their homes. It wasn't perfect in the spring, but we've certainly made some major improvements in the fall. I think Washington County was one of the leaders in that because all of our children have iPads and laptops. That made it immensely easier to get students online. I think we're going to see some benefits once schools get back to normal. Some things we're doing today will never change. We can open up educational possibilities to students in all high schools, no matter where the teachers are. I'm very excited to see what technology's role will play in the future of education.
Okay. I'm the next, this, this question is also being addressed to Bill Donahue, the same question, this from the same questioner.
Okay, I'm going to agree with Mr. Beckford as far as technology and how that is playing a wonderful role. I had the opportunity as a retired teacher. I actually taught in the spring when we switched from, you know, in classrooms to distance learning. It was a challenge. I was a physics teacher. So consequently, it was a challenge, but but very successful. I agree that I see this as a wonderful opportunity. I once read some meme that said, oh, my goodness, there'll be no more snow days. In addition to that, I see that where, you know, we offer a course at one high school can now be possibly offered in at another high school. For example, you know, if they offer Japanese at Boonsborough, somebody at North could pick it up, et cetera. So I think that this this is opportunity just how technology works. We do have the technology. Every kid is carrying a device. And so if I see that as a as a future for kids in 21st century.
Okay. And Ms. Williams, could you give a shot at that question?
Certainly. And with regard to my vision, I would like to have every graduate of Washington County Public Schools prepared to be successful in the workplace, in the armed services, if that's the route they choose, in a trade school or in an institution of higher education. That's my vision for our students. And you know, I'm passionate about our CTE programs that we have in Washington County. Very proud of the program that we have at Washington County Technical High School. And I think our system is doing a great job of preparing students to work in the 21st century.
Mr. Stauffer, would you give a shot at that question?
No.
I think what we're seeing right now with this distance learning, I think what we're seeing is the fact that distance learning, online learning is never going to replace, and I've said this for years, the relationship between a teacher and a student in the real live classroom. That's never going to change. I think sometimes we make changes in education just for the sake of change, and that's not always good. We do have to change with the times. I've been involved in changes through the years. I guess I'm a little cynical about change sometimes because I've my 42 years, I saw things come and disappear and then come back a decade or so later under a new name, this type of thing. So I used to teach online IAT, interactive television over Antietam Cable Channel 6. It was to students at two different high schools. I broadcast casted from Williamsport High School. So again, I think change is necessary. It'll come about. Some things that we are now doing will continue to do, but I'm not a big fan of change unless there's a real purpose for it. I would also add this that students do have difference in different types of intelligences and we need to provide for all types of students, not just the college-bound students, but those who serve in the military, those who go to trade school, those who become plumbers, carpenters, and work with their hands in trade schools like that. Thank you.
Okay. The we have another question, second question coming to Ben Forrest. What steps can the Board of Education take to attract and retain certified teachers? What thoughts do you have on that?
First, this is an extremely important and relevant question, obviously, for any school system, especially ours. I think it's extremely important, number one, to address teacher salaries. Mr. Beckford, in his opening statement, talked about the starting salary levels for our teachers, but I think it's also that is extremely important, but it's also important to talk about the salaries for teachers who are continuing in their careers so that we're not losing experienced teachers to other school districts. The other thing that I'd like to address is the fact that our partnerships with institutions of higher education have to play an important role in this in recruiting and retaining teachers as well, so that we're able to access teachers who are extremely excited and are well qualified coming from high-quality institutions that we have right here in our state. So that we are giving our students the best possible teachers that we can have access to.
Okay, great. Thank you. Could we have April Zentmeyer have a shot at that question about attracting and retaining teachers?
Our system has a great mentoring program, professional development, and much support for new teachers. And while pay and benefits are incredibly important, the provision of a safe work environment is critical, also empowering teachers as professionals. They're on the front line. They know the problems. They know how to brainstorm solutions and we need to look to them sometimes more often as the source of the solutions for problems. The demand for relationship between teachers and students and the recognition of a job well done is incredibly, incredibly important. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have another question here, and this is for Laditra Robinson. What steps can the Board of Education take to increase the numbers of students going to college or getting trade certification? Laditra?
What we have to do is we have to mentor the students. We got the lifting machine out there. We got to teach the students that there's more than just graduating from high school, that what the other goals can be. We need to have classes where there's teaching the kids what else is out there if I'm going to college, going to a trade school, to military, but we have to keep the kids focused and let all kids know that it's possible to go on to higher education. So many times, a lot of kids feel that they can't do it. So we have to get the counselors on top of teaching these kids and letting them know that everybody has a chance to go on to college, go to a trade school, and that there's no one that is no reason for you to not be able to do these things. So they definitely have to be motivated and the counselors have to motivate the children to give them the knowledge to know that they can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And put that question to Peter Beckford. Give him a shot at answering that.
Absolutely. There's a fantastic program that I had a chance to go and and visit in Frederick where they took a school that had real challenges, Frederick High School, and they turned it around with a program called Links. And one of the things that I think we could borrow from that program is that every single student at Frederick High School, starting in the eighth grade, works with a counselor to come up with a plan, and they continue working with that same counselor. And they sometimes they check in daily to see how they're doing on that plan. And that plan could be going to college, but it could also be vocational. I know we're trying very hard to expand our vocational programs because we know that when students are doing and learning things that they are passionate about, they're going to do well in academic classes as well. We've seen that at Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. We've seen that at Career and Tech. And we've seen that in our early college program with our partnerships with places like HCC. So I absolutely agree. Part of it is just mentoring kids the whole way through, starting in eighth grade.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. And Mr. Donahue, would you take a crack at that?
Certainly. Well, I have an advantage in that I'm retired from Washington County Technical High School. So we were the career in grades school. And it's a wonderful experience watching children who do have a passion for what they're learning and then again, pulling that into the academic side as well. So yeah, I agree that the expanding the career and technology programs, working with kids, having kids set expectations as to what where they where they want to be, what they want to do, and let kids realize that, you know, not every child needs to go to a higher education. Career and tech is good or a job or the military, whatever they want to do, but to foster that 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 desire and that and encourage it to so that kids realize that they're to when they move on, what's going to happen or, you know, it's just a, I think that's the way that will improve that we were successful at tech.
Okay. The the question, next question is for Melissa Williams. How do you think we can we can keep students, faculty, and staff safe during the pandemic and and simultaneously provide education? How do we keep them safe and also provide our central function there?
That's a wonderful question, and it's one we're faced with. By doing everything possible, we're providing our teachers with PPE. By doing everything possible, we're providing our teachers with PPE. We have our custodians taking great care of cleaning and sanitizing the learning environment and practicing safe distancing. We're doing all the things that we're being told to do by the Health Department and the CDC. It's a great concern, and it's a high priority of the Board and the Superintendent, to keep our students safe and to keep our staff safe. The Board took a lot of criticism from a number of people because there are those out there who think our kids should be back in school. And we want them back in school, but we want them back in school under safe conditions.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. And Benjamin Forrest, would you take a crack at that, that question about how do we, how do we keep faculty, students and staff safe during the pandemic and also teach them?
Absolutely. This is certainly an unprecedented situation. And if you had asked me on March 13th, when we all went virtual and, and everything kind of stopped, if we'd still be here, I'd have laughed at you. And if the, because my estimation was certainly wrong when I was working on policy with the sys, the University System of Maryland, on how long and what the necessary actions would be. But I know that everybody is, is certainly longing for, for a sense of normalcy and to get back to the way things were. But obviously, safety has to be the number one priority. Working hand in hand with the Health Department is extremely important. Spacing students out, rotating students through times that they're able to be in classrooms as, as we start to phase them back in, and ensuring that everybody is following all, all of the Health Department and the CDC's guidelines and best practices are extremely important in making sure that we're prioritizing safety and keeping the members of our educational community safe.
And Mr. Stouffer, how would you respond to that question?
Well, Washington County Public Schools has a plan. It's a plan in flux. The Governor said to begin opening the schools gradually and safely. I think a lot of people out there, or at least a significant number, think that we could just dump the kids back in school and it would be like going back in September of 2019. I think there are various protocols for safety in place. If everyone would follow those, and if you have a problem, let the Superintendent know, let the Board members know, and we'll see what we can do to, to handle that. But it's something, I think it's significant that all 24 systems in the state of Maryland went back virtually and so forth. The other thing is too, I've been taught, asked about schools in other states. We have 21, 22,000 kids in Washington County, 46, 47 schools. Other systems in Pennsylvania, right across the border, have 2, 3, 4,000 kids, maybe four, five, six schools. So it's a lot more difficult to put kids back in school full time here than it is someplace else, but we're trying to do the best we can.
Okay, okay, thank you. We have another question here. This one's going for Ms. Zentmeyer first. The question is, how do you propose that we find a balance between the freedom of speech, protected by the First Amendment, and the desire of parents and administrators to keep political strife out of the classrooms? How do you, how do you strike that balance?
That is an excellent question. And we leave a lot of our liberties at the schoolroom door. But in the diversity of thought, we have such opportunity to teach kids critical thinking skills, just like many of the jobs that they will be participating in don't even exist yet. Many of the problems that they will face post-high school don't exist yet. COVID is a great example of that. And so as we prepare our kids, we use opportunities to teach them to critically assess their environment. And while we respect diversity and we respect political aspirations and goals and platforms of everyone, we also have to respect the person sitting beside us.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm going to put the same question to Ms. Robinson. How do you propose we find this balance between the freedom of speech and the desire of parents and administrators to keep political strife out of the classrooms?
I think we definitely should have freedom of speech. There's a time and a place for everything, as long as there are respect for teachers and for the students. I think that politics shouldn't be always in, but it's going to happen this day and age, that it will happen in our schools. But I think if we respect the next person, we should be able to get through that because with the diversity, with racial tension, I think that's going to happen, and until it gets better. But I think that if we respect each other and each other's freedom of speech, I think we would be able to get through it, and we could get a balance through that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robinson. We have a, another, another question, maybe somewhat related, about the, I'm going to, first, putting this first to Mr. Bickford. How do you see the role of the police officers who serve as resource officers in this, the Washington County Public Schools? And would you support shifting the cost of these officers back to the city and the county?
Am I unmuted? Yes, okay, good. You can hear me, correct?
Yep.
So the School Resource Officer Program has actually been very successful. I think it takes a certain kind of officer to be a school resource officer, and we're lucky in our, in our county that we found those special personalities that are there because they care about the kids. I also think it goes back to, like, you know, a huge part of keeping our schools secure and taking some of that burden off of teachers when things just basically get to, to another level. But it is a great way to build relationships with the police. And then what was the second part of your question? I'm sorry?
Would, would you support shifting the cost of these officers back to the city and the county?
Yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we took the lead and we, we paid for our officers, and other counties do not. They actually shipped it back as a public safety expense. And we haven't been able to convince our county commissioners that, that's a good idea, but we continue to do that because we need every dollar we can.
Okay. Going to put the same question to Ms. Robinson. So the, about the role of police officers as resource, resource officers in the Washington County Public Schools? And do you support shifting the cost of those officers back to the city and the county?
Okay, yes, I do support shifting it back to the city and the county because I believe that it is good to have the police officers for the safety of the school, but I think we're going a little past that with a lot of stu, well, I won't say a lot of students, but with students that went, different things that might be adherence to doing things wrong. I think instead of bringing the police in, I think we should have more counselors in to work with the kids before we're so quick to send kids off to juvenile, because that's that whole thing about the pipeline to prison thing. And I think that we should have counselors more talking to the students before we're bringing police officers in and giving a stigma and giving children that opportunity that's upsetting to not even be in school. So I would shift it back to the city and the county. I do, it's a devil's lord. I think we do need the police in there, but I think we do need the backup as far as treating kids, though some of the kids the wrong way and making it more of a policing type of school. I think that should stop.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we, finally, we have Mr. Stouffer. If Stan, if you would give that a, take a crack at that.
Okay, thank you. I think Mr. Bickford is correct. I've worked with many resource officers about Williamsport High School, and it takes a special type of police officer to be one. Not every police officer on, on the county forces and city forces have that personality. The SROs also are involved with counselors and APs in doing counseling sessions with students. There, I disagree that it's a school to prison pipeline. I don't think that, in my experiences at Williamsport, SROs basically did anything to encourage that. And I would also say this, originally, we were given $750,000 years ago to pay for the cost of resource officers. That cost now is over $1 million. So we have to come up with $250,000, $300,000 out of what the county gives us in maintenance of effort funding to pay for those. And that's money that takes away from providing instruction and other services for our students. So we're only one of two counties in the state that pay out of their MOE budget for police officers.
Okay, good. Thank you. We are now in the audience section, audience question section. So these are questions that are coming from the people who are tuning in to this Facebook event. And the first question that we have up here is, how would the Board of Education work with community agencies to improve educational outcomes for students experiencing homelessness, poverty and teen pregnancy? Pretty important, important topic there. And we have, the question is going to Benjamin Forrest first.
Thank you. This is an extremely important topic. I think, number one, it's extremely important for the Board to have a hands-on and direct relationship with these community agencies, that, that we should take a proactive approach, reaching out and, and working with these organizations so that we have a seamless integration of the services that they are able to provide into our school system and into our, into the schools in general. I think it's important when we're talking about the, the services that are available in our community, that those are streamlined and inaccessible to students and parents through counseling services, whether it be the, the counselors at an elementary level or a middle school level that are accessible to students or to students and parents. And at a high school level where their students are directly interacting with counselors and have a, have a counselor that's working with their specific class. So I think it's important that, that we have a streamlined approach to, to integrate those into our school systems.
Okay. Thank you. And next, we have, that, that question is, same question going to Mr. Donahue.
Well, I think fortunately, we, you know, the, the Board of Education and community agencies are working together, and that is already happening, which is, which is a wonderful thing. Ultimately, homelessness, poverty, fear, pregnancy, whatever the case may be, all of those issues affect instruction. So the Board needs to be, the educational system needs to be involved because if those basic needs of fear, et cetera, are not, not met, then kids can't learn. So you see that with the counselors working with, with the other agencies, additional groups coming in and talking to your staff to try to train your teachers as well so that they can see what's happening. But yeah, that the, the Board needs to continue to work with that, and probably even there are ways that we can improve it as, as with COVID as, as the number of homeless and, and poverty's increased, we're going to need to continue to even reach out to, to more students.
Good, thank you. And Ms. Zentmeyer, would you try to answer that question?
We're fortunate to have so many talented and absolutely committed agencies in our county. The people who sat on the Diversity Committee, for example. We had 16 agencies who came together for that, capitalizing on this network and promoting partnerships to, to help those students in need isn't, is already in place. Capitalizing on it is important. The only way that we're going to do that is to build relationships, not only with the community, but with the students we serve. I know when in the schools that I worked in, it was definitely something that the administration was able to help along with the people, personnel workers, to develop those relationships with parents and students and provide a way for them to become an integral part of the student body where relationships with others was also established. Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. We have another question from the, from the audience here. Where do you stand on the state and federal government's suggestion that non-compliance with larger policies could result, could result in the loss of funding? Where do you stand on the state and federal government's suggestion that non-compliance with larger policies could result in loss of funding? And the question first is going to go to Melissa Williams.
Yes, that's an interesting question. And I'll say that for three years of my 35 with Washington County Public Schools, I served as the school system's Title I Coordinator. So I'm very, very familiar with the strings that are attached to federal funds. And that said, I'm very much a person who follows the rules. But I think there are times, and this is one of those times, when we are in a global pandemic, when those strings and those policies, I think, could be relaxed in order to allow school systems who, I feel very strongly about local control, to allow school systems to do what they need to do with the funds that have been allocated to them, to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the students in spending those funds.
Thank you. And Mr. Bickford, would you answer that question?
Yeah, two things come to mind. I mean, it is a really sort of a sneaky way for, for the federal government and even sometimes the state government to try to take local control by attaching these various requirements in order to get to funding. But the reality is oftentimes we need that funding because it's a very expensive work that we do. So we do pour through many grants, take advantage of, of grants that come from various areas of the government. But, um, so it's, it's, I always say, one of the things that I've learned in my first term is we spend an unbelievable amount of money making sure that we're spending money correctly. So people should think about that when they look at the high cost of administration. A lot of that is because we are guided by so many regulations that are tied to funding that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Robinson, would you answer that question?
Sure. I think we need the funding, but at the same time, like Ms. Williams said, we need to loosen the strings because at the end, it's the importance of the children and their education. So that should be in effect, in effect of why we have to kind of go both. We need to not tighten the string as tight as the federal government wants to because we, it's, it's for the kids at the end of the day. It's for the kid to get the best education they can. And some of the things, listening to the federal government, I think is not fair. And we're doing it just to get the funding, yes, but at the same time, we have to think about our children, the teachers and everyone's safety during this pandemic, using that as an example. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And finally, Mr. Stouffer, would you answer that question?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not sure just what the questioner is driving at by asking that, but we have a lot of mandates that come down from the state and federal government. I think Washington County Public Schools system does its best to comply with all those things. I would hate to see funding leave. I don't know anything that we do now that would deny us the funding. Even in these strenuous times, I think we're doing our best to meet the equity needs of students, given the difficult times that Mrs. Williams addressed. And we do have a lot of grants and everything that we use to fund things. Let's face it, the school system today is not the same system of 50, 60, 70s, 80s. Let's face it, the school system today is not the same system of 50, 60, 70s, 80s, 90s, even the early 2000s. It costs a lot of money to run a school system because of all the requirements of the state and federal government.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We have another question. This one is going first to Benjamin Forrest. How would you handle hearing negative feedback about any Washington County public school employee, including the superintendent? To Mr. Forrest.
Thank you. This is an extremely important question, fundamentally because first, feedback, feedback is extremely important. It's an extremely important part of how we're able to do our jobs as members of the Board of Education, of the elected board. But it's also an extremely important way for us to be able to ensure that we're growing and building a better school system. Specifically about negative feedback at the superintendent's level, that's really where the board's kind of jurisdiction lies. So that's important to engage with that, any of that feedback and work to find a solution to move forward and work to overcome any of the concerns or underlying conflicts that might have caused that. Now, at a lower school level, the board's jurisdiction doesn't really reach down into the, into those levels. So it would be important to work with the superintendent to ensure that those things are addressed. And then that gets passed along to the correct level so that they're addressed correctly.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Donahue, how would you address that issue?
I think the first thing to do when you, as you hear negative feedback about an employee is not feed into it, but to listen. Again, any feedback is data, and that data is important. You do check it for validity, make sure that it's a valid data. And then, but listen, don't play into it, don't feed it, don't add to it, just, okay, just here, thank you, I've heard that, so on. If it does involve the superintendent, then yes, that needs to be, you know, that's where the jurisdiction of the elected board, they need to discuss that with them. If it does involve somebody at the, I don't know, we're a different level, facility level, then they need to bring it to the superintendent's attention. And then that needs to, and then, and then let it go at that point. Let it realize that the superintendent and the people who are employed by the Board of Education will take the necessary means.
Okay, okay, thank you. And finally, Ms. Zentmeyer, how would you address that question?
I think that needs assessment is incredibly important. Without feedback, we don't have it. We need continuous improvement, and that is based in our assessing what our stakeholders are thinking. Gossip, absolutely not. Valuable feedback, listen, and then present it in a positive way. What would you do? And then take it to the people who can make that happen.
Good, thank you. We have another question here. How should schools promote efforts to expand diversity among the faculties and schools leadership? And that question is going first to Melissa Williams.
Well, I'm not sure how to interpret this question, but I'm going to take it as one that is asking about the need for diversity among our schools, faculties, and leadership. And that's something that the school system has been working very hard to address. We would like to have a more diverse workforce. And the challenge is that so would every other school system in the United States. They're, they're after the same people we're trying to entice to come to work in our school system. So it becomes not just a school system effort, but it needs to be a community effort. And we need to find ways for Washington County to attract more diversity so that we can pull from that diversity the faculty members and the school leadership that we need.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Bickford, how would you address that question?
Sure. I know it's an absolute top priority of our Human Resources Department when they're recruiting. We have a very diverse student population. I think the latest count, we have over 45 different languages spoken in our schools. So we need to have, we need to have a diverse teaching population as well as school leadership. One of the ways they're doing that, they do job recruiting fairs at historically black colleges. And they even do some targeted advertising. I think one of the biggest champions for our school system are the students themselves. I serve as one of the advisors for the Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council. And so impressed by the issues that they're tackling, like diversity and promoting that. And so I think in some ways, we need to find some of our rock star students to help us spread that message that this is a community that you would want to live in and that you would want to teach in.
Thank you. Thank you. And finally, Ms. Robinson, would you take a crack at that question?
Yes. We definitely need to diversify our workforce in Washington County. One of the main things I think we need to do, we need to value the teachers and we need to welcome diversity into our schools and into the community to get diversity into Washington County. The kids want to see, minority kids want to see teachers like them, okay? So for us to sit and bring more teachers in, we got diversified minority teachers, we have to make them feel welcome. We have to make them have a, show value to them. And that's not just the school, but it's the community of Washington County. And I think it, I think going into the historical black colleges, going to different colleges, but letting people be welcomed into Hagerstown, into Washington County. I think that's the number one thing, is the showing value to our teachers and the welcoming them in. And that's why personally, I have met minority teachers, and that's the reason why they don't come, because they feel they're not being welcomed into Washington County system. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have another question here. This one is going from, to Mr. Schuffer first. The closure of schools and stay-at-home orders in the spring have revealed the limited choices for childcare in the local area. How should Washington County Public School System support preschool age education?
Well, it's something that we didn't, we didn't envision, I won't say that. It's something that is a problem that everybody has. It's something that the school system basically looked into. I know trying to open up the old Funkstown Elementary School, I'm not sure we got reasonable bids back to do that. I don't really know how to answer that because the thing of it is we got to get kids back in school, that'll solve the problem. So that's all I can say about that. I would like to add one thing about the last question, if I may.
Okay.
One of the problems that we run into in recruiting a diverse workforce is the fact that we've been told that so many candidates don't really want to come to rural Washington County to live because they're used to living in urban areas. And you really have to like the urban or the rural lifestyle that we do have here in this county, I think, in order to come here. So I, I, I think we would welcome, we would definitely welcome them if we could get them to come here. But it's, it's, it's really a problem.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We are going to give Mr. Forrest a chance to answer that previous question about the, the closure of, I'm going to repeat it for you. The closure of schools and stay-at-home orders in the spring have revealed the limited choices for childcare in the local area. How should the Washington County Public Schools support preschool age education? And that's, so that's going to Mr. Forrest.
Thank you. Study after study shows that when students started their educational careers earlier, they perform better in the long run. So it's important that we, that we're ensuring that our students have access across our county to preschool age education. Obviously, things have gotten a little more difficult in the pandemic world as we're living in now. But working with our, working with our teachers who are still working to engage these students virtually, and then ultimately hoping to reintroduce them to the school system as we're able to safely will be, you know, important ways to do this. But it's also important to work on our partnerships with childcare organizations that are around our county, whether it be, you know, a small childcare facility that only has space for a couple of kids, or if it's a larger childcare facility. So it's important to strengthen those relationships and to provide support where we're able to.
Thank you. And Mr. Donahue, would you please?
Yeah, this one, this one is a challenging question because every, every school system is having the same problem. It's not just Washington County, it's everywhere. And again, I think working with partnerships with, with other agencies that are trying to make this happen, I know YMCA was working with it, you know, local daycares, et cetera, et cetera. Frederick County, I believe, even started bringing in some kids and kind of doing pre-kind of daycare as well. Early childhood preschool education. Again, like Mr. Forrest said, you know, the earlier we start with kids learning, the, the the more successful they are as they, as they become lifelong learners. And so it is, it is a huge undertaking. The school system is trying to work on it, and I think will continue to work on it as we try to figure out, you know, where to move forward.
Okay, very good. We have another question here from the audience. The Washington, Washington County includes numerous distinct communities, and our schools represent the character of these neighborhoods. How should Washington County schools celebrate the unique character of each school community and at the same time, work to bring our community together? And that question goes first to Ms. Zentmeyer.
Well, as a former South High Rebel whose children were Boonsborough High School Warriors, I think that those two communities are very distinct and very cohesive and very supportive of their school communities. Some things are board-level problems that need, or challenges that need to be addressed. And some things need to remain in the community. It's the wisdom of the superintendent and the board to decide which is which.
Okay, thank you. And the, the same question goes to Melissa Williams. And I've been informed, actually, this is the last question, so I'm going to, I'm going to reread it just for. Washington County includes numerous distinct communities, and our schools represent the character of those neighborhoods. How should Washington County schools celebrate the unique character of each school community and at the same time, work to bring our community together? So over to you, Ms. Williams.
I understand that I have the discretion to address a previous question. And I would like to speak to the matter of preschool age education. Under our current superintendent and the current board, we have expanded pre-K opportunities. We now have more preschool opportunities, classrooms, full-day pre-K than we have ever had. And we're very proud of that. We have 69 classes at the moment. Each year, the number of classes grows, and those programs are being refined. So I think Washington County Public Schools is supporting preschool age education for four-year-olds at least.
Okay, good. Thank you. I would like to thank all the candidates for their appearance tonight. And I'd also like to thank, obviously, the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Valuable opportunity for the public to educate themselves about the candidates and about this, this contest. And finally, I'll open it up to each of you if you have for a two-minute wrap-up comments. And this is going first to Melissa Williams for wrap-up, wrap-up comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm very proud of the accomplishments of our school system over the eight years that I've been a member of the board. And I'm proud of the part that I've played in those accomplishments. I voted no when I thought that the best interest of our students was not being served. And I voted yes when I thought they were. I feel that I've been an excellent steward of the taxpayers' money, and I've been committed and diligent in my board service. I've involved myself in professional growth opportunities through the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. Yearly, I have served on numerous MAPE committees, attended the annual conference, and have attended many Boardmanship Academy sessions. I hold MAPE Leadership One and Two certifications, and I'm in my second year as a member of the MAPE Board of Directors. In my eight years of service on the Washington County Board of Education, I have worked hard and given my best. I would like to continue to work on behalf of our students, their families, and our county. And I hope I've earned your support for a third term. In closing, I want to be clear. I don't have all the answers to the problems and challenges that will face us in the days ahead. But what I do have is a willingness, a passion, and a strong commitment to bring my best self to work effectively with others as a team, to find the answers and to meet those challenges. Thank you again to the League for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. And next, Mr. Forrest.
I would once again like to thank the League of Women Voters of Washington County for hosting this great event, as well as my fellow candidates for participating this evening. I would also like to thank all of the voters for joining us. Your commitment to being informed and educated, an informed and educated voter is commendable, and our county will certainly be the better for it. I hope that throughout tonight, my passion for our county, our educational community, and education as a whole has shown through. I hope that it is clear to you that I am dedicated to doing the best job possible to improve our school system. But more than anything, I hope to leave you with this commitment. If elected, I am fully committed to engaging, discussing, and listening to the stakeholders in our educational community and the members of our community at large. I cannot guarantee that we will always agree on every issue or policy, nor that I will be able to give you an answer that you may like. However, I can commit to you that I will always be willing to listen and discuss these with you in a manner that establishes and maintains mutual respect and dignity. Thank you, and may God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Zentmeyer? Would you like to?
The future of America really is in the classrooms of Washington County today. That's a humbling thought. I'm homegrown. I'm deeply invested in our community that's educated my children, my grandchildren, as well as my family and friends from throughout the county, all to do great things. It's my turn to share my expertise and give back to the system that has so graciously invested in me. Life has prepared me to survey situations, to assess needs, solve challenges, and successfully address shareholders' inputs and needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
Well, I have to admit, I thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for holding this event. It's not only helpful to promote our own candidate seats, but we all have to figure out who to vote for. I give tribute to our longtime board member, Wayne Ridenhour, who was giving up his seat after a respected career in, in service on the Board of Education. So I have to say, from the answers here I heard tonight, I think the community is going to be in very good hands, no matter who ends up around the table. People seem very committed, very educated about what our school board needs. And so I'm really, I'm really pleased to be able to hear that. I think, I also just want to use this opportunity, since people that are listening, obviously, are engaged in the process. We have some real challenges ahead. We must remind people that as a school board, we do not have the authority to collect funds. We get all of our funds from elsewhere. And those funds are in danger, not just because of COVID, but we've, we've been going every year to the county commissioners trying to prove that even though our student population hasn't, our numbers haven't grown, our need has. And so far, they have not responded to that. They continue to give us the absolute minimum that they're required by state law to give us. And even in recent meetings, they've been sounding like they're looking for other ways to cut funding, which very much concerns me because our students need that funding more than ever. So if you're engaged in this process, just remember that when it comes time to passing a budget, please remind the county commissioners where they should place their priorities. My priorities in the coming term, if I'm reelected, would be preserving our expanded pre-K, continuing to improve our virtual options, learning from what we're experiencing today, still promoting smaller class sizes, recruiting experienced diverse teachers and improving relations with our collective bargaining associations while shoring up salaries for veteran teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Ms. Robinson, would you make a closing statement?
I want to first thank everyone that invited us to this forum. I want to just say that my passion is for youth to become successful young adults. This would be my first term if elected and I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to collaborate with a team that we're all, we're going to have different input, but we've come together as a whole. I want to be transparent to the parents, to the teachers, to the community, to let them know that we're here for them. I want to be able to, able to talk to people. I want to be able to go into the schools, the middle, the middle school, the elementary school, the high school, to talk, to find out what's going on. I want to be an advocate for everyone in the community so they all know that we are hearing them on the Board of Education. So hopefully, this, like I said, this is my first, this will be my first term if elected and I do promise you that I would be there, I would learn as much and I would advocate for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Donahue, would you make a closing statement?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm muted. Yes, excellent. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity this evening. I am a former Washington County teacher. My educational experiences include teaching in the middle school and the high schools, being a science resource specialist at the elementary and secondary levels, being an instructional coach and being a technology integration specialist. In addition, I own, co-in a small business and I've worked previously as a research chemist and as a nuclear physicist. I believe elected school board members need to be fiscally responsible and develop policies that are designed to improve instruction, create equity for all students and provide all students with a high-quality 21st century education. Schools educate future employees in communication, mathematics and critical thinking skills necessary for business operations and current students or consumers both today and tomorrow. We need Board of Education members with experience and vision to make policies that will make those goals happen. I have that vision and I'm asking for your vote and support. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. Schuffer, would you make a closing statement?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity this evening. The forum certainly went faster than I thought it would. It went very quickly. It was well organized. Enjoy trying to answer the questions. I've enjoyed my four years on the board. I've worked very diligently for years. I've, for the four years, preparing for meetings, attending meetings of the MAPE Legislative Committee in, in Annapolis. When we came on the board, one of the things that I and my other colleagues on the board demanded of Superintendent Michael was before we would advocate for extra funding from the county commissioners, we had to be sure that all the funds that we received were being spent intelligently and going to where they should go. And he and staff worked on the budget, cut $2 million, put, rearranged the categories and put money where it should have been and so forth. We've been very good stewards of the budget, I think. Funding is a key to doing a lot of things in education. Funding is the key to lowering class size, expanding pre-K, recruiting and retaining teachers. Funding, it takes money and that needs to be done. And I would add this, for 42 years, I worked for students. Why would I change now and not work for students while serving on the board? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I will hand this off to Mr. Wilson for, for the League.
Well, we want to thank one and all for their participation in the forum this evening. I too was impressed with the quality of answers and the thought that went into questions that you had not seen prior to this evening, but you were able to handle those questions with grace. We are well-served when we have people that are willing to, to work for sub-minimum wage rates in public service. The League of Women Voters has published a guide for consumers in Washington County and around the state. If you would go to vote411, that's the four and the one and the one.org, you can put in your home address, find out where your polling place will be located, find out who is running in your area and see comparative answers. So if the verbal answers that, that you received this evening did not answer all of your questions on vote411.org, you can find these seven candidates' written responses to some slightly different questions that the League put to them. Would also note that on our website at lvwashco.org, you will find the announcement of two additional forums coming up next Thursday. We will be hosting the candidates for city council and mayor of Hagerstown. And on October 15th, we will have a forum for the candidates for the sixth congressional district. I wish you all a pleasant evening and we thank you for participating in our program this evening. A good evening. Bye-bye.